The University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Fox City's campus assists the City of Manassia with video recordings of city meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. To express opinions about City of Manassia issues or these broadcasts, contact the mayor's office. Contact a city alderman. Contact information appears on the website. Or complete the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.
I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council Meeting to Order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unafraid, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have the roll, please.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Sevenik.
Here.
Alderman Hammond.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Tom Grady.
Here.
Alderman Ted Grady.
Here.
Alderman Rappela.
Here.
All are present with the absence of Alderman Isenak.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda this evening is the report of department head, staff, and consultants. We do have a presentation from the Nina Manassia Veterans Honor Guard this evening. Dave, if you'd like to come forward.
I'm Dave Mix and this is Bob Boric and we're from the Nina Manassia Veterans Honor Guard. And I'm sure you guys know what we do, so I won't go into it, but what we do is we get some cash once in a while from the funerals. We don't want to keep it on a big amount of money, so what we do is we go out to the community wide and we try to keep it in the valley and donate to the cities. So this is the first of three times we're going to do this, but we're going to make the donation tonight to the Manassia Police Department, to the K-9 unit of $500. And we know that they need it. And remember, police are veterans and the dog is a good veteran with the cop and they save a lot of stuff for us. So that's why we decided that they could be one of our acceptance donations. So, so I want to come forward.
Matt?
On behalf of the Nina Manassia Honor Guard, I'd like to present this check to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, General.
Thank you both. Item two is the Minutes and Communications. Do we have a motion?
Later.
Alderman Sevenik.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to receive Minutes A through G and Communications H and I.
It's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Schrader, could you review Letter H for folks watching?
So the City of Manassia, we have hired our new code enforcement specialist. She just started mid-last week, so we're excited to have her onboard, hit the ground running. She certainly is open to taking on any of the concerns and issues that we have within the City of Manassia. We certainly have a good group to support her and hopefully can work in tandem with the City of Manassia Community Development, Health Department, Billing Services Division, Police Department, Fire Department, and really start to make that change that we've been looking for out in the community. We have her tasked on several things, working with already, looking at hopefully bringing forward an updated ordinance from a public nuisance standpoint in the near future, as well as looking at other ways we can really start to modify the process in which we can get compliance much quicker. So hopefully we'll be seeing more from that in the coming months.
Thank you for that. And would either the mayor or Alderman Tom Grady as the Chair of the Landmarks Commission be willing to address Letter I?
Yes, well, maybe people don't know that we'll be celebrating our sesquicentennial coming up in 2024. We're trying to work out a shared, because Nina does 2023. So we are looking to set up an ad hoc committee that would help to put this event forward within the city. Nina will be kicking theirs off in, I believe it'll be March, with a joint exhibit at the Octagon House of the Nina Manassia, dealing with people, places, product, and they're still kind of working that out. But we need to put a group together too, to add some elements within our own community for 2024. I noticed the committee will be formed and nomination will be recommended by the end of the year. So if people really are serious, don't drag your feet, because I would like to see a committee put together by early December, actually, so we can get kind of going. So if...
Alderman Grady did ask me to change that to the end of November, and I thought I did, but apparently I didn't hit save.
Okay.
So...
And they will contact who is the question?
They could send their interest to the mayor's office.
Okay.
And we'll put all the names together and see how many we get and make a decision as to who we want at that point to be on the committee. I know I've talked to Mayor Lang quite a bit about it already. We do plan on doing some joint things through the parades next summer as well and want to put some money into a float celebrating those events in both of our communities. So there's a little bit of work going on behind the scenes, but there's a lot more to still be involved with.
Right. And the historical society is involved, so there are some people that have shown interest already. And this, I don't think this will be a landmarks committee. And hopefully by the people that show interest in it, we can pick a chair from there. Okay? Thank you.
So you're looking for volunteers from the community to serve on this committee?
Yes.
Thank you. And sesquicentennial is 150 years as a city, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
I can't say that either. See, we'll have to practice, huh? Seeing no further comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item F is public comments. Is there anyone who wishes to speak tonight? If you do, you could step up to the microphone.
Sandra DeBeille Taylor, 545 Broad Street. I first would like to comment on the Nina Manassia Veterans Honor Guard. For those of you who don't know, those individuals not only served our country when they were young and in the service, but now that they're retired, they continue to volunteer their time to our community. Just this year alone, they attended over 50 funerals for servicemen and women who had And it's very nice that they turn around and the little bit that they might get from these families, thanking them, they turn around and contribute it back to our community. So I would like to thank them on behalf of everyone. Then I, onto the agenda, I am very happy to hear that we have now hired a code enforcement specialist. It took a while, and I hope this person is able to get things done, because a lot of work needs to be done. I still would really like to see this position reverted back to the police department rather than Community Development, and that is something that will have to be an internal discussion, because things were not getting done in Community Development. Speaking of which, we have a major issue with Alliance today, Third Street. There were three semis parked on Third Street without drivers in them. It is a hazard. And the mayor, Community Development, the police department, the aldermen for that district, you all have to meet and hash out something before someone gets killed or seriously injured. Regarding the agenda, I did notice in the check register, we have closed TIF 9 and payments were made to the overlapping taxing entities. Just for the public to know, the Appleton School District received over $51,000. Calliope County received over $38,000. The Manassia Joint School District received almost $30,000. And the Fox Valley Technical College received over $8,000. This TIF was opened almost 23 years ago, or 20 years ago. I would like to know how much the city will be receiving back and if that is going into our coffers, or if that has already been designated to the Strong Neighborhoods program, or if it's being used for some other purpose. It was a long... The good thing about this is when they close, they actually do return. And fortunately, this is one of the few TIF districts that actually worked out and we had money coming back. So that's good news. I did want to bring up one thing, and it, you'll be approving a certified survey map tonight for McDonald's. Back in 2017, 2018, they did a remodel of the interior or exterior of the building. At that time, no landscaping, changes were made, and according to the memo that I read, it was like not required, but there is nothing as far as along the sidewalk or the perimeter of the building. Now, according to the plan, now, well, you just have to approve the CSM. The Plan Commission approved it with only landscaping, but the west side of the lot that they recently purchased, where they will be expanding their parking lot. However, there are residential properties to the south, and those residential properties are going to be negatively impacted by this two-lane of drive-through traffic and headlights. So I'm questioning why that was never addressed at the Plan Commission level, because whether, regardless of the value of those properties, regardless if they're rental properties, they're still residential properties. And per our code, the purpose of transitional area is to eliminate or minimize adverse external effects of commercial, industrial, or industrial development on neighborhood residential uses or districts. We do a terrible job of enforcing our landscaping at the site plan review. Even our own Public Works Department, our new building, has a 10-foot transitional buffer between that and the residential property that is nothing. I mean, some of the shrubs are dead, and the majority are less than a foot tall. And it's supposed to completely buffer within five years any of that parking lot or that building from the residential area. When we can't even do it right in our own backyard, it's really hard to enforce it in someone else's. So I would ask clarification onto that. We have a great code as far as our code goes. It's just the enforcement, and that goes with code enforcement too. We're always lacking, but have a good evening. Thank you.
Is there anyone else this evening? No. Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to make a motion or make separate motions? Alderman Sevenik?
Just going to go through it there. If that's okay with the rest of the body. At this time, I'd like for us to approve the Minutes of the Common Council of 10-3 of 22.
So motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item two. Alderman Schmidt?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, excuse me, to approve the certified survey map for 429 Third Street, parcel number 7-1-00186-00, and 212 Racine Street, parcel number 7-1-0018300.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my question, I did email Jennifer Sazman about the 429 Third Street, the taxes that are delinquent. And I didn't know with the acquisition, or maybe Sam knows this, the acquisition of McDonald's to purchase that, does McDonald's then have to pay for those, was it $1,900 that are outstanding, or is that get deducted off of the closing costs of the resident of 429 Third Street?
According to the treasurer's website, the taxes are still outstanding. So for the CSM to be signed by myself, the taxes would have to be paid by whatever party, but they would have to be paid in full.
Is that a stipulation on the sale then, or anything? Or I don't know how that plays into this. It's a small amount, but I just want to make sure that...
Just for the CSM itself to be recorded, there cannot be any outstanding financial obligations.
Okay, so I'll take care of that. Okay. That answers my question. Thanks.
And we've actually held several CSMs over the years that I can think of for unpaid taxes, so when Jennifer signs it, that's the first thing she looks at. Alderman Rappela?
Thank you, Mayor. To piggyback off of our, from Sandra's comments about landscaping and issues like that, looking at the site map, there are those two lots that are to the south. And is there plans, Sam, to put some type of barriers on the south and on the west side of the new lot that we're approving?
Yes, so there is currently a fence. If you're looking at the CSM, that Lot 4, Block 36, that currently is the drive-through lane, currently has a fence all the way around that. Again, would be expanding throughout that. They will be putting additional landscaping along the west and south property line, in addition to some additional lighting and fencing in that area. We did have some conversations with them following the Plan Commission meeting, as it was kind of being discussed at the council or at the Plan Commission level, of really providing that fence and seeing what we can do to get them to reinsert that. So a fence is not required within a transitional setback area. We could debate all day long whether or not it should be or not, but at the same token, it certainly does provide a solid screening for at least that first six feet. So we are kind of in that conversations with McDonald's and the engineers on that. And for an example, the original plan that was submitted to the Plan Commission for review only had a five-foot setback. Again, our transitional requires a 10 feet, so again, trying to work with them to make those improvements happen in the areas that the property is being improved. Certainly, it would be difficult for any existing development to go back and reinforce today's standards on past projects that are legally conforming, that have met code. You know, for instance, if we required our landscaping plans throughout, and setbacks within the parking lot area of the existing building, you likely would lose all your parking. So certainly trying to, you know, work with developers as well as protect property values and surrounding properties.
Okay. Thank you, Sam. Right along the west and the south side, I realize there's that house in the laundromat. Nothing really can be done on the site towards the eastern portion of their lot, but I realize that something on the western side and on that far, those two on the southern lots, those are going to have fences or something there. So thank you very much for your diligent work on this effort.
Alderman Sevenik?
Still trying to bring up the drawings here from the Planning Commission itself. Anyways, I'm concerned about the south side more than the other areas, because those are the backyards of that property. And it should have some type of birmingham at least, with some type of shrubbing or, you know, when they're coming in, those headlights are going to be hitting those houses all the time, at least from what I'm seeing from the drawings that I looked at last week. And now I can't find it, so, but anyways. What is being, I know Randy asked the question, but specifically, what is being proposed for the south side of those two residential lots?
So fencing and landscaping along that south property line where those two lots are?
Just the fence?
And landscaping.
What type of fence, though? I mean, it's not an open fence, it's an enclosed fence?
Yes.
Okay. See, that wasn't said.
Yeah, and the existing fence that is there, again, goes out along that one property line, is a solid wooden six-foot fence. And part of the problem initially, they were not like, they were not looking to add a fence, because it oftentimes would get hit. I think they've said they've replaced it four times in the past, I don't know, 10 years. And so adding this landscape buffer between that and the fence also would, will help that aspect of it. Again, they've been great to work with in trying to mitigate those impacts.
All right. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries, seven zero.
Item I is action items. The first is accounts payable and payroll. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of September 30th through October 13th, 2022, in the amount of $1,454,062.87.
It's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries, seven zero.
Item two is the liquor license application. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the Class A and Class A liquor license for Fish Tail LLC, doing business as Manassia Marathon, for the premise located at 209 Racine Street for the remainder of the 2022 through 2023 licensing year.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion, Alderman Nichols?
Yes, just wanted to verify with the clerk that all inspections were passed for this particular location? Yes, they have passed. Thank you.
Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question pertaining to the demerit system that we have established. And is this going to go back to zero, or because it's pretty much a different entity? Or is it the same business? Because if it's the same business, then the demerit should be the same. If it's not, if the name's been changed or whatever, then it would probably be starting at zero.
Lieutenant Albrecht, do you have an answer for this? Otherwise, we're going to have to do a little bit of research.
I guess my understanding of the way they're changing their name is the points would, or the demerit system would revert back to zero, so they would start over.
So, okay, so Mayor, here's my concern about that. It's a loophole.
Yeah.
Correct?
No, I think so.
So if someone gets to the point where they're going to lose, possibly lose their liquor license, they could just start another LLC, give it to another business, or it's same people, but then start fresh. So I just kind of had some concerns about this. I'm actually in favor of this move, because I think it's going to be run better than that, but to me, it's a loophole. And I see all the council members shaking their heads, so. Any comment on that, Mayor?
I don't disagree.
Okay.
We'll have the city attorney do a little bit of research and make sure that we all understand things the same, and then we can make a decision if we want to change the ordinance somehow, or if we can. It may be difficult, if it's a separate legal entity, to transfer those demerit points to a new legal entity, just because they're in the same building.
Okay. All right. That's fair.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries, seven zero.
Item three is a seatbelt enforcement grant. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the acceptance and spending of the alcohol and seatbelt enforcement grants for 2022 and 2023.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Lieutenant Albrecht, could you just share a bit about what these grants are and what they will do for Manassia?
Sure. So we've been participating in these grants for the past few years. What they allow us to do is to supplement our traffic enforcement goals by adding additional personnel on overtime. And like the motion indicates, one is for seatbelt-related violations, the other one is for OWI-related violations. And we're lucky to have them and be able to supplement our regular traffic enforcement.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? It says approximately 25,000, so I'm not sure if we have an exact number or not. Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries, seven zero.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. We have Resolution Number 35. Alderman Hammond?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution 35-22, a resolution in support of election officials introduced by myself.
Did you want, did you want to expand upon it a little bit further? Whoops, sorry.
I mean, if I can now, I'd be happy to. As we all know, there's an election coming up at the beginning of November, and I think it's important that we, as elected officials, show our support for our clerk, deputy clerk, and the institutional norms of our electoral processes. We've all had elections where the person we wanted to win didn't, and we've had days where the person we wanted to win did. But nonetheless, we should support the processes that we have in place, the nonpartisan, because after all, it's the way that we all got elected up here. So I think it's really important that we, as elected officials and as common council, just have that front, just so folks in Manassia know that we stand by the processes that are in place.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please? Alderman Grady? Thank you, Clerk Craver, for all you do with the elections as well.
Thank you.
Then we've got a whole long list of appointments. The first two we should take separately from the rest. If anyone would like to make a motion? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. Your first appointment is for Mary Van Der Wys to the Board of Appeals, and that term would be from 8, excuse me, 10/18/22 to 2/1/24.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. This is one of our few appointments that we get, other than the mayor making all the appointments. And Roy has sent us a communication indicating he'd like to continue to serve, so that's appreciated. And I'll make a motion that Roy Cordas... appreciated, and I'll make a motion that Roy Cordes be reappointed to the Water and Light Commission for a term of 10/18/22 to 10/12/27.
So motion and a second by Alderman Nichols. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Did I say, were there any opposed? No opposed? Motion carries. Item three. Alderman Hammond?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Kyle Conan to the Sustainability Committee for the term of 10/12/22 to 5/12/25.
Do you want to do them as a group, or do you want to do them all separately?
Actually, if we could do them all together, I think that makes the most sense. And for context, all these folks are already on the Sustainability Board. This is to be put in text, so they have staggered terms, so we can officially start from going from a Sustainability Board to the Sustainability Committee.
Lindsey is a new person, actually.
Three through six. I'd like to make a motion to approve the mayor appointments for the Sustainability Committee, three through six.
Okay.
And then I'll do seven separate.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion and a second. So the appointments are Kyle Conan for a three-year term, Kelsey Perry for a three-year term, Roger Cannitz for a two-year term, and Linda Stoll for a two-year term. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. John, oops. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion for Section 7, for the approval of your appointment for Lindsay Klum to the Sustainability Committee for the term of 10/12/22 to 5/12/23.
So motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right. I missed eight. I thought it was above, and they're all together, so I apologize for making this more difficult than need be. So for eight, for the mayor's appointment of Kathy Thunes to the Sustainability Committee for the term of 10/12/22 to 5/12/23.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Savinck?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion that we approve your appointment of Alderman Austin Hammond as the Alderman Representative to the Sustainability Committee, and that he be there for the remainder of 2022 to 2023 of the common council session.
So motion and a second. So this appointment would be renewed every year at our organizational meeting. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item N is public comments. Is there anyone who'd like to speak?
Well, you turned on for me. Sandra DeBille Taylor, 545 Broad Street. I just wanted to thank you for addressing the landscaping site plan for McDonald's. It really, I would have said the same thing regardless of what business it was. It just happened to be McDonald's. Not only do we seem to downgrade our landscaping for a lot of these commercial or industrial properties, landscaping not only beautifies, but it also helps with impervious surface and runoff and all the other things that the Sustainability Board is so after. So it's like, we should be looking at when we, these parking lots are done, what other biofiltration and all these other things that could be incorporated. So those are my comments. Thank you very much.
See, what, see... Before we adjourn, I wanted to let everyone know that our colleague is not feeling well right now, and that's why she's not here this evening. And if you get a chance, give her a call or text or something.
Seeing no other business, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
The University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Fox City's campus assists the City of Minashe with video recordings of city meetings. Minashe residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. To express opinions about City of Minashe issues or these broadcasts, contact the mayor's Contact a city alderman. Contact information appears on the website. Or complete the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.